Good evening. Welcome. It's great to see so many smiling faces. The video of this meeting is streamed on YouTube and will be available on Facebook and the Village's website. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Clerk Saladino to call the roll.
Trustee Augustine.
Here.
Trustee Gail.
Here.
Trustee McGee. Trustee O'Brien.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
President Kukler.
Here. And with that, we have a full board. Thank you, everybody, for attending. At this time, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. It's my hope I have three volunteers that are going to help us. What am I changing up? Maybe four volunteers. Later in my president's report, we're going to have Timothy O'Brien joining us as our Director of Public Works, and this is his family that's here to watch him be sworn in, and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance right there in the middle. And then afterwards, you can just introduce yourself and tell us, at least the three younger ones, what school you go to. Okay, I know moms, Tricia O'Brien, but what about the children? Why don't you tell us your names and where you're going to school?
I'm Ronan, and I go to Cossette.
Awesome.
I'm Hazel, and I go to Cossette.
That's great.
I'm Elliot, and I go to Park.
All right, well, thank you. Tell everybody to watch on YouTube now. And thank you very much. Tonight's a special evening. We had an election on April 1st, and so we have newly elected officials. All the incumbents that were running, which were the three trustees and myself, were successful in the election and will be, again, being sworn in for a new term. As current members of the Village Board were up for reelection, they have been reelected, the Village Board will be comprised of the same individuals seated up here on the dais. Prior to the oaths being administered, the new Village Board, convening, one item's left for consideration, and that's the minutes from the previous board meeting. So for the old board, since they were the group that was here during that meeting, we want to have those minutes considered, and then we'll do new things, so we'll reconvene a new board for that purpose. So to start off, may I have a motion for approval of the minutes in a second?
I move to approve the minutes from the April 14th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gail and Trustee Peterson. Clerk Saladino, the last roll call vote of this board.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee McGee. Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Gail.
Aye.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously. Now, we're going to go to the different oaths of office. I'm going to be sworn in first by Clerk Saladino, and I'm going to swear in Clerk Saladino. Then we're going to do Trustee Gail, Trustee Peterson, and then Trustee Thompson will be sworn in. So are we standing up for this, I assume? I could probably for people at home that want to hear my voice.
I will. I'm Mark Kukler. Having been elected to the office of Village President in the Village of LaGrange and the County of Cook, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of Village President to the best of my ability. Thank you.
I, Paul Saladino. Having been elected to the office of Village Clerk in the Village of LaGrange in the County of Cook, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Village Clerk to the best of my ability.
Now, we'll give the oath to Trustee Gail.
I, Lou Gail. Having been elected to the office of trustee in the Village of LaGrange in the County of Cook, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Village Trustee to the best of my ability.
And now, Trustee Peterson.
Okay. I, Peggy Peterson. Having been elected to the office of trustee in the Village of LaGrange in the County of Cook, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Village Trustee to the best of my ability.
And now, Trustee Thompson.
Igleyn Thompson. Having been elected to the office of Village Trustee in the Village of LaGrange in the County of Cook, do solemnly swear that I uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Village Trustee to the best of my ability. Thanks, sir.
Again, congratulations Clerk Saladino and Trustee Gail, Peterson and Thompson. You all campaigned hard, and we know that you'll continue to serve the residents of LaGrange, so thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a proclamation. Well, let me ask, do we have to do any receipt? We're seated, we're fine, continuing on in the president's address? All right. Next on the agenda is a proclamation declaring Sunday, June 8th, 2025 as Race Amity Day. I'm going to read the proclamation, but first I'd like to thank the individuals from the Community Diversity Group for their efforts in serving the community and for suggesting this proclamation. We really do appreciate all of your efforts. Whereas in May of 1921, Washington, in Washington, DC, thousands of people gathered for the first-ever National Convention for Amity between the races. And whereas the convention was a multiracial interfaith gathering spanning three days that called for amity between the black and white races. And whereas work continues towards achieving peace and unity to reach the vision of our nation, e pluribus unum, out of many, one. And whereas the greatest asset of the Village of LaGrange is its people, and whereas the Village of LaGrange is comprised of a multicultural, multi-ethnic, and multiracial residents, specifically 22.3% of LaGrange residents, or approximately more than 3,500 people, identify as black, Hispanic, Asian, or multiracial. And whereas friendship, collegibility, civility, respect, and kindness are commonly shared ideals of the collective residents of the Village of LaGrange. And whereas towards the e pluribus unum initiative of the National Center for Race Amity has invited communities across the United States of America to join in introspection and reflection on the beauty and richness of diverse peoples of this great nation while reaching out with a spirit of amity toward one another annually on the second Sunday in June designated as Race Amity Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village of LaGrange does hereby proclaim June 8th, 2025, as Race Amity Day and urges all residents of the Village of LaGrange to take part in its observance. So with that, let's do a round of applause to the group, the race diversity group. Next up, as I alluded to in the beginning, we have an exciting event occurring, and that is we have a new Public Works Director. Since the position of Public Works became vacant in December of 2024, the Village has worked with a professional recruitment firm, MGT, to fill the position. A total of 44 applications from applicants were received with the highest qualified candidates selected for interviews. At the conclusion of the process, Timothy O'Brien was identified as the top candidate for the position. Mr. O'Brien joins the Village, having most recently held the position of Village Engineer in Niles, Illinois, where he supervised a team of engineers. Timothy has extensive experience in capital projects, including the management of an 80 million capital improvement program, has led the development of a lead service line replacement plan, manages processes for the separation of municipal sewer systems, and has undertaken a variety of engineering projects throughout his career. He served as project manager for Niles Golf Mill Park Stormwater Project, which incorporated both above and below ground storage and permeable pavers to improve storm water management. Timothy holds an Illinois and California Professional Engineer license. He graduated from Northwestern University and is a member of several professional associations, including the American Public Works Association and the Illinois Association of Flood Plan and Stormwater Management. I understand that Timothy, as we know, is joined by his family, including Tricia and children Elliot, Roman, and Hazel. So at this time, I think they'd all come up, so we can, well, may I have a motion to appoint Timothy O'Brien as Public Work Director and a second?
So moved.
Second.
And then I would ask Clerk Saladino to call a roll call vote.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee McGee. Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Gail.
Aye.
And that, of course, passes unanimously. Thank you, and we're so happy to have you join the Village family. If you, the whole family would come on up, everybody gets back on TV. And Clerk Saladino is going to swear in. Director O'Brien.
I, Timothy O'Brien. I had been appointed to the office of Public Works Director in the Village of LaGrange in the County of Cook. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Illinois, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Public Works Director to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Do we have a chair for Tim or not? Not till next meeting? Next meeting, we'll get you a more comfortable chair. Unfortunately, because you'll have to do your homework instead of coming here. But, all right. On to farmer's market time. 2025 season of the LaGrange Farmer's Market is right around the corner. The first market taking place next Thursday. The market will be held every Thursday through October from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The market is held on Harris and adjacent to the parking lot between LaGrange Road and Sixth Avenue. This year includes even more farmers and specialty food artisans, as well as an activity tent showcasing area businesses and organizations. The schedule for activities changes weekly and focuses on children's activities, crafts, health and wellness and education, gardening ideas, and cooking tips. So please join your friends, neighbors, professional and amateur chefs, and others who shop weekly for the best food and products found in the area. We really appreciate the LGBA for all their work on the farmer's market. The LGBA does a great job organizing and planning that. And I know this year Chrissy Joseph worked hard to get signs that have been up around the neighborhood announcing that the farmer's market is coming, and we appreciate her efforts in that endeavor. Next board meeting, due to the Memorial Day holiday, the next board meeting will take place next month on June 9th. While observing Memorial Day, we wish you peace and solace in remembering those that have sacrificed for our country. And as always, we're so fortunate in LaGrange to have the Robert Colter American Legion. The Post is hosting some Memorial Day services throughout the area. They start at 9:15 at Park Home Cemetery. There'll be one in LaGrange Park at the Veterans Memorial at 9:40, at Lyonsville Cemetery at 10:00, and Hodgkins at 11:00, Countryside Memorial Park at 11:45, and then back into LaGrange. For the final Memorial Day service will be held at the American Legion Post 1941. That's, as everyone knows, at 900 South LaGrange Road. That will start approximately noon. Post Commander William Kinon says that they will pay special tribute to honoring the fallen, those who have paid the ultimate price for freedom. The service will include a three-volley rifle salute, taps, and a laying of the memorial wreath. Also, light refreshments will follow the conclusion, and all of the ceremonies are open to the public. We hope that you can attend. And lastly, I would just congratulate all the graduates. I know it's graduation time. I hope everybody is, great graduations. And for yesterday, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. With that, I'll ask if there's a manager's report.
There is. Thank you, President Kukler, and good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to welcome Director O'Brien to our team. We're looking forward to working with you, so congratulations on the appointment. I'd also like to thank Director Micah. She will be attending her last board meeting tonight, so we want to thank her for her service to the community and wish her well in the next chapter. We have several resources to share tonight regarding with landscaping, waste that might be generated when people get out in their yards with the warmer weather. This will, you know, relate to some of the debris that's generated. I thought I'd share a few reminders on that. So this includes disposing of yard waste in two-ply paper bags or 35-gallon cans to be collected on your regular garbage day with a yard waste sticker that's affixed to each bag or can. Another opportunity for disposal includes brush and shrubbery limbs that are collected as yard waste by the Village's refuse and recycling hauler. To be collected, the brush must be bundled with natural twine, not exceed four feet in length, and must weigh no more than 50 pounds per bundle. Individual branches must not exceed four inches in diameter and must be bundled. Each bundle must have a yard waste sticker affixed. Village also has a brush pickup program. To participate in the program, residents place brush in the parkway for removal the Sunday prior to the week of pickup in preparation for pickup to begin at 7:00 AM the first Monday of the month. Please allow for two weeks for the completion of that effort as it's subject to weather fluctuations, as well as fluctuations in the volume that's generated. With May now behind us, the next pickup, it will be the first week of June. Residents are encouraged to visit the Village's website and the calendar for additional details. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Village Manager Knight. And I apologize when I was saying congratulations to the graduates and Happy Mother's Day. I know Susie had a graduate from Marquette and obviously celebrated Mother's Day on Sunday, but I did want to thank you for your hard efforts at the Village of LaGrange. As our Director of Finance, you were instrumental in, really, the transition from Luciparoni, who had been here for decades. We do appreciate that. You were instrumental in getting the payroll up and running, and we appreciate all those efforts. We really do thank you for your hard work for the Village, and we wish you nothing but the best. I would open it to the trustees if anybody else would like to say something. Trustee Peterson.
Yes, I want to direct my comments to Director Micah because I have to say that the budget process is now a document that promotes discussion and is very usable, and I know it was a lot of work. And I greatly appreciate the work that was put into it. It was very helpful to review a document that answered all my questions. You answered all my questions, and it was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Trustee Peterson. Trustee O'Brien.
Susie, it's been a pleasure to get to know you. We'll miss you, and good luck in the future.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler, and thank you, Susie Micah. It's been short but sweet. As President Kukler said, you came in filling big shoes of someone who'd been here for three decades. You learned quickly, you implemented big things, and you did it with a smile. You were always, as Trustee Peterson alluded to, easy to work with and helpful in explaining things. We've always got things to learn, and I always found it very easy to get the information from you and to understand it clearly, and I certainly learned a lot. And you just have a wonderful personality, and it's been a joy to have you in this group, and we wish you the best of luck wherever you may end up. But thank you for your time here.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Trustee McGee.
Susie, I just want to say, we haven't had a lot of interaction, but I want to thank you for your hard work because, as it's been said, you came in and you filled some really big shoes. All of your reports were always great, very easy for us to understand, and we just want to wish you the best in your next endeavors in life, and thank you so much for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you, Trustee McGee. Trustee Thompson.
Susie, it's going to be a, we're going to miss you very much. Hate to see you leave. I know you'll bring great things to where you're going next. As everyone says, you know, your clarification of the budget was awesome. Your ability to answer our questions, we had them, and we had some very detailed conversations, and you clarified a lot of stuff for me on how it should work and move forward, and I really appreciate that, and we're going to miss working with you, and good luck in the future. Thank you very much.
I want a round of applause for Susie. And don't be a stranger. Okay. Village Clerk Saladino, I'd like to request that you read the items on the consent agenda, followed by those items appearing under current business.
Matters on the consent agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote because they already have been considered fully by the board at a previous meeting or have been determined to be of a routine nature. Any member of the Board of Trustees may request that an item be moved from the consent agenda to current business for separate consideration. Item A, a resolution approving a contract with A&amp;B Landscaping and Tree Service, Inc. for tree trimming services. Item B, a resolution approving a contract with A&amp;B Landscaping and Tree Service, Inc. for tree removal services. And item C, May 12, 2025 consolidated voucher. Current business. This agenda item includes consideration of matters being presented to the Board of Trustees for action. Item A, an ordinance amending Chapter 111 of La Grange Code of Ordinances regarding Class C and Class D liquor licenses. Item B, an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of La Grange Code of Ordinances regarding massage establishments. Item C, a resolution approving a village manager employment agreement with John Knight. Item D, a resolution indicating municipal support for a Cook County real estate Class 6B property tax incentive to 501-515 Shawmont Avenue. Item E, an ordinance amending the village fee schedule incorporating a pass-through water rate increase. Item F, an ordinance amending various sections of the La Grange Code of Ordinances fee schedule and fine schedule regarding short-term rentals and implementing a hotel motel tax. Item G, an ordinance amending various sections of the La Grange zoning code relating to short-term rentals. Item H, an ordinance approving a special use permit and site plan to authorize short-term rentals at 108 through 110 West Calendar Avenue.
That's some good timing. We're just about to open the microphone to public comments. So we are now at the place in our agenda where we will hear from people in the public that have thoughts on matters on tonight's agenda. If anyone would like to speak, please come up, state your name and your location, where you live.
Hi, my name is Glenn Grozich. I'm the owner of the property 501 through 515 Shawmont Avenue.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, I'm Paula Keine. I'm Glenn's sister and the county manager for the property.
Thank you.
And my name is Kevin Griffin. I represent ownership. We just wanted to let everyone know that we're here tonight to answer any questions the village might have on item, I believe it's 6D.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Al Foreman, Seventh Avenue, La Grange. First, congratulations to all newly installed officers. Thank you, and thank everyone for all you've done in the past and all you'll do in the future. I have a couple of quick comments on water rates. What else would I talk about? So since the last meeting, I've done a little homework, including reviewing a Baxter and Woodman study. I've analyzed the last two years' worth of water rate adjustments, and I've summarized the last two years' worth of payments to McCook. So after considering that homework, I think the proposed rate of $11.79 is reasonable. So that's maybe a surprise. I, unlike previous meetings where I've tried to share my thinking in advance, I will follow up with a note after this meeting explaining my analysis and hopefully support, giving -- you don't need my blessing, but giving my rationale as to why I think we're okay. There's two footnotes that I would add, and they address two topics that came up at the last meeting. One was Trustee Thompson's concerns over the fact that we missed a rate increase last year. You'll see in my analysis that I believe the combination of the last three McCook rate increases offset the missing rate increase from last year. So I think all those things in concert get us still back to the $11.79 rate that we have now. So that's -- for me, I won't lose any sleep over it, obviously. I'll see if I can convince you to see my logic. And then the second point goes to President Kukler's comments last week, last meeting, about considering the level of reserves in the water fund as you look at future adjustments. So I think it's kind of obvious to me that the water fund budget needs to be revisited, given the rate increases that we're showing now. You'll see some other thoughts in my email that indicates some other areas that I think review would be required, but I do think it's important to make sure you have a good estimate of what those reserves would be before you find yourself in the next scenario needing to adjust the rates again. So that's my comments for today. Thank you for listening, and again, thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Al. We appreciate your words.
Todd Van Cleve, a La Grange resident. Not feeling very good tonight, so I'll keep it simple. I'll just say that destination cities around the world have places for people to stay. La Grange is a destination city and has nowhere for anyone to stay, so we need to fix this. It's very simple. It's very easy. I'm not talking about VRBOs. I'm talking about places in downtown La Grange where people can stay that are unobstructed by, you know, other residents that could be upset by what, you know, the noises or the, you know, other things that people are causing. In a downtown La Grange setting, we have nothing to worry about. You could go out to bars until 1:00 a.m. As President Kukler pointed out, from Monday to Friday, you could go to bars until 1:00 a.m. Saturday and Sunday, or I'm sorry, Friday and Saturday night, you could go out until 2:00 a.m. We can stay open late. We can have parties. We can have fun. We can do all kinds of things. But we want this to be a place where people can come and stay, visit with in-laws, visit with family, and have a place to go. And currently, we don't have that. We want that, and tonight, I think we're going to vote on that. And I think it's important that we vote yes so that we can make sure that La Grange becomes one of these amazing destinations that everybody wants. Hinsdale doesn't have it. You know, Countryside doesn't have it. They have motels, they have weird things. Brookfield has weird things. Nobody wants to stay there. They want to stay in La Grange. They want to be part of this community and stay in this community near the downtown train station, near where everybody is, where their family is, and let's make that happen.
Thank you.
Cynthia Showsky, and I live at 420 South Edgewood in La Grange. I too would like to address the issue of the short-term rentals and just have you think about something before you go ahead and approve this. This was not part of the comprehensive plan. This idea was not in there, and I do think that we need to consider housing in a much broader concept than having short-term rentals. I'm concerned that this might affect the ability to have affordable units around the village of La Grange so that we can have long-term residents here, not short-term residents. I just want you to consider that when you're thinking about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know what happened there. That was really aggressive. Anyway, my name is Dan Spain. I'm the owner of 108 Calendar LLC and the property of 108-110 West Calendar. So I'm really excited about what we've been working on at that property. I just want to let you know we would be calling it the Treehouse Guest Suites. These would be short-term rentals. There's five units total. We're designing them to match the same quality and care that we've come to expect, that you've come to expect to see from us at the Elm. I want to continue to see this village thrive and do it in a way that's thoughtful, responsible, and positive for the whole community. As many of you know, La Grange has really grown into a go-to spot for events in the western suburbs. Between places like the Elm and other great local venues, we're hosting weddings, showers, anniversaries, people's biggest life moments, and those celebrations bring in guests. Right now, many of those guests end up staying in Oakbrook, Countryside, or even downtown Chicago because we don't have the options for them here. Once their event is over, they leave town, and so does their spending. They're getting their breakfast, shopping, and their dinner somewhere else. We'd love to change that. With the Treehouse Guest Suites, we're creating a space where visitors can stay here, right here in La Grange, walk to local cafes, pop into local shops, or grab a movie at our beloved La Grange Theater. We want them to experience everything this town has to offer. The business community would also love to host their out-of-town guests here. It's currently difficult to do. We don't have any overnight accommodations. The Treehouse Guest Suites would change that. There are countless other examples of why people think this would be a win-win for everyone involved, evidenced by all the supportive emails you all received over the last couple of days. My team and I put a lot of thought into how to do this the right way. We're meeting the village's parking requirements. We'll keep things clean and well-managed. We'll continue to be good neighbors. We live and work here, too. And it's about keeping this community special. Thanks again for considering my proposal. I really appreciate it. I'm happy to answer any questions further.
Thank you. We'll call you back if the trustees have any questions. Seeing no other comments, I would ask for a motion and a second on the consent agenda.
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale, Trustee McGee. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda?
President Kukler, just my usual. I recuse myself from voting on any agenda items related to the village prosecutor.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion on the consent agenda, Clerk Saladino, please call a roll.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Under current business, the first item that we have is an ordinance amending Chapter 111 of the La Grange Code of Ordinances. At the February 24th Liquor Commission meeting, the commission considered a code amendment request from Maria Pekovic, owner of Balkan Bakery, to permit the tasting of alcohol liquor for C1 licenses under similar parameters as currently for the wine and beer tastings that have a Class D license. Subsequent to that request, Maria requested that Section C1B be amended to include beer for consumption within the licensed premises, as well as wine, which is currently permitted. The request was found to be consistent with the provisions in other liquor license classifications, and staff in the village attorney have prepared an ordinance amending the liquor code to address both of these requests. The Liquor Commission reviewed the draft ordinance earlier this evening. The proposed ordinance will update the Code of Ordinances with provisions related to C1 and D1 licenses to allow tastings of spirits under similar parameters as those for wine and beer tastings, as well as allowing the consumption of beer within the licensed premises. So I would entertain a motion and a second on this ordinance.
I move for approval of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale, Trustee O'Brien. Any comments regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
And that passes.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. Since it was your motion, I don't know why I jumped ahead, but I appreciate that. And I appreciate Maria's investment and continued investment in our community. She has a great bakery, as well as sandwiches, croissants, and other delicious items, and we're happy that she's continuing to evolve her menu, and so that's great. Next up is item B, current business, an ordinance amending various sections of the village Code of Ordinances regarding massage places. I'd like to invite Trustee Peterson to provide an overview of this item.
Thank you, President Kukler. The licensing of massage therapy establishments serves to protect the health and safety of the public, promote good business practice, and uphold community standards. Licensing requirements ensure the massage therapy establishments meet minimum safety, health, and hygiene standards, ultimately serving to prevent the spread of communicable diseases and ensuring the well-being of clients and service providers. Current village regulations do not include requirements related to specific elements of massage therapy establishments. Requirements of this nature are generally considered an essential component of responsible local government in the face of growing demand for wellness services. These requirements include steps such as background checks, sanitation, and record-creeping requirements, and provide the village with the opportunity to inspect facilities, verify credentials, and enforce compliance with applicable laws and regulations. Massage therapy establishment licensing also upholds professional standards and benefits consumers through added transparency and the knowledge that licensed businesses meet recognized qualifications and ethical norms. Staff recommends the approval of the proposed ordinance amending various sections of the Village of La Grange Code of Ordinances regarding massage therapy establishments. I move to approve this.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Peterson and Trustee McGee. Any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously. Next up, item C is a resolution approving our village manager, Jack Knight's employment agreement. In 2022, the village engaged consultant from Gov HR to aid in the recruitment of candidates to fill the vacant village manager position. At the end of an extensive process, the village board entered into employment agreement with village manager Knight to fill that position. Contract terms stipulate that the existing contract expires with the current term of the village president, which is May 12, 2025. That's by Illinois law, a village manager's contract cannot extend past the village president's term. Contract terms stipulate that. The village board has discussed renewal of village manager Knight's employment agreement with the associated provisions captured in the proposed agreement. The agreement terms are for a four-year period commencing with the approval of the contract and again will expire at the conclusion of my term. May I have a motion and a second to approve this item?
I move for approval of the employment agreement with manager Knight.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. And a second from Trustee O'Brien? Thank you. Any questions or discussions regarding this matter? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson. Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously. Next up is D, a resolution indicating municipal sport for a Cook County real estate Class 6B property tax incentive to 501-515 Shawmont Avenue. I'm going to refer that to Trustee Gale, and again, the applicants are here if anybody has questions for them.
Thank you, Mr. President. G&amp;G Partners LLC, doing business as Billet Specialties. The app- The applicant is the owner of the property at 505 to 515 Shawmont Avenue. The applicant is seeking village support for an extension of its Class 6B classification from the Cook County Assessor. A Class B 6 classification results in a temporary reduction of the assessed value of a property, resulting in lower property taxes for a set period of time. The Class 6B program is an economic development incentive program administered through the Cook County Assessor's Office. According to the Cook County Assessor's Office, the program is designed to encourage industrial development throughout Cook County, offering a real estate tax incentive, the development of new industrial facilities, rehabilitation of existing industrial structures, and the industrial reutilization of abandoned buildings. Goal of Class 6B is to attract new industry, stimulate expansion and retention of existing industry, and increase employment opportunities. Properties that receive the Class 6B property tax incentive are assessed at 10% of the market value for the first 10 years, 15% in the 11th year, and 20% in the 12th year, resulting in significant tax savings. Without this incentive, industrial real estate is normally assessed at 25% of its market value. The incentive may be renewed during the last three years of the initial incentive term. The county requires that the renewal applicant, application be accompanied by a resolution from the local municipality stating that it, quote, "supports and consents to the renewal of the Class 6B incentive and that it has determined that the industrial use of the property is necessary and beneficial to the local economy," close quote. The current application. Billet Specialties has been in business in LaGrange for nearly 25 years. Their primary facility is at 500 Shawmont Avenue. In 2014, the village approved a resolution supporting the applicant's request for a 6B classification that facilitated their purchase of the 505 to 515 Shawmont Avenue property. The current application applicant, application requests village support for an extension of that current 6B incentive for a period of another 12 years. So the subject property, known as 501 to 515 Shawmont, is a 600,000 square foot site comprised of three parcels situated in the Shawmont Industrial Park at the northeast corner of Shawmont and Kemen Avenue. The industrial, uh, industrial building of approximately 31,000 square feet occupies the majority of the property. The balance of the site is approved with surface parking and small landscaped areas. As further detailed in the attached application, Billet Specialties currently occupies roughly 10,000 square feet of the building for warehousing to support its primary operations at 500 Shawmont Avenue. They lease roughly 11,000 square foot of the building to other users, and the balance of the building is vacant. In 2014, the village approved the initial 6B, 6B classification based on the vacancy of the building and G and G's planned investment, including roof repairs, electrical, new lighting, window replacement, and parking lot repair. As detailed in the attached application, the improvements represent almost 160,000 in expense that has been made on the property. Additionally, the applicant's primary facility at 500 Shawmont has had nearly, nearly 749,000 invested in it in roughly the same timeframe. According to the applicant, Billet Specialties has added 17 jobs during that timeframe as well. If the incentive renewal is granted, Billet Specialties intends to keep its existing operations and expand into approximately 10,000 square foot currently vacant space of the 501-515 Shawmont. The additional warehouse will facilitate the company's expansion of its wheel, wheel product line. As detailed in the attached application, Billet Specialty contends that the incentive is necessary to facilitate their planned expansion and occupancy of the, of the property. The tax implications of this incentive request. So the requested incentive, if granted, would continue to reduce assessment level for the subject property for 12 years. By year 13, the assessment would return to the typical 25%. In 2023, the total property tax bill for the site was a little, a little under 31,000, approximately 5,000 more than projected at the initial, when the initial incentive was granted. The applicant's material include projected property tax impacts over the 12-year life of the 6B incentive renewal for three scenarios. If the incentive is renewed, if the incentive is not renewed, and if the property is occupied, and if the incentive is not renewed and the building becomes vacant. The analysis is based solely on current market value of the building. It does not account for reassessments over the 12-year, um, 12-year period. Should be noted that any changes in property tax is shown in the attached reflect increased or decreased revenue from the subject property only. Note that the village levies for a set dollar amount, and therefore, if one property pays less taxes, then the property tax burden is shifted to all other properties in the village. In addition to property, in addition to property taxes, Billet Specialties generates a modest amount of annual sales tax. Two other industrial properties previously, um, received the reduced assessment through the Class 6B program, summary of which, um, is below. Um, one was the Duback Electrical Group at 10 North Beach, and that was in 2016, and then Whole Cubes in, at 9600 Ogden Avenue. In 2023, the village supported that, that application as well. So with that presentation, um, I move for approval of the real estate Class 6B property tax incentive for 501 to 515 Shawmont Avenue.
Thank you, Trustee Gale and Trustee Peterson. Any comments, talk on, on this? I, I would just like to add, we, I think we, as the board, understand, um, when these requests are made, uh, that we're shifting the property tax from one entity to another. And so we look at this really carefully. Um, in this case, uh, Mr. Grozich, uh, you know, was born and raised in the area. He started a business. He's invested his life savings in this business, and he's been very successful. Um, just some of the, the facts, he started with three employees. He's now growing, uh, almost to 70 employees. He's, was in Burr Ridge. He picked LaGrange. He's invested a lot of his own money in LaGrange. He hasn't asked for the village to contribute anything in that. He hasn't asked for the county or the state to contribute anything for that. Um, so that's why I'm very comfortable and appreciate your investment, your hard work, and your employment of people in the community, uh, for this. So with that, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, and we wish you all the best in the future. Thank you. Under E, an ordinance amending the village fee schedule incorporating a pass-through water rate increase. I would refer to Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. It's going to be a little bit easier for me to read this now, knowing that we have L support out there on it. Um, so yes, as, as President Kukler said, this is an ordinance amending the village fee schedule incorporating a pass-through water rate increase. The village of McCook, which supplies water to the village, recently sent a letter indicating that the water rates charged to the village will increase 4% effective June 1st, 2025, increasing the cost of water to governmental users from $5.95 per 1,000 gallons to $6.19. The new rates are due to increases in Lake Michigan water rates from the city of Chicago. The attached ordinance amending water rates has been prepared in accordance with village policy, which is to pass these costs through to water customers. Approval of the ordinance will increase the village's current water rate by 2.04%, resulting in approximately 24 cent increase from the $11.55 per 100 cubic feet to $11.79 per 100 cubic feet. Water rates offset the cost to purchase water and support the operation and maintenance of the water system. Costs include, costs included in the water fund include replacement, replacements of aging water mains, the maintaining of adequate reserves for repairs, and a revenue base necessary to support potential financing vehicles, for example, a bond issue, that are planned, of course, to, to fund capital work, including meeting state-led service line replacement requirements. We have a budget for this. Um, approve, approval of this, of the proposed pass-through ordinance is estimated to generate approximately $123,420 in water fund revenue. Staff has recommended approval of an ordinance amending the village fee schedule incorporating a pass-through water rate increase, and I would motion to approve it.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine and Trustee Gale. Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
And that passes, uh, unanimously. And again, thank you, Susie, for your efforts and, and helping us get to that position. We do appreciate your hard work. Uh, next up is, uh, really three ordinances that are related. They're F, G, and H. We will have to vote on these separately, but I do think it makes sense to kind of talk about them all as one. Um, and they're relating to the, uh, changing the ordinances, adding a tax if we are going to approve short-term rentals, and then for the specific location of 108-110 Calendar Avenue. Um, so again, we, Attorney Schuster, I assume, handles these for motion purposes as one individual?
So I think you can discuss them all together, but when, uh, we should have a separate motion for each ordinance and a separate vote for each one.
Okay. Why don't we start then with an, with a, uh, introduction of F, and then we'll, we will discuss F, G, and H, and then we will, uh, vote after we're done with the discussion. So with that, I'd ask Trustee Thompson to introduce F.
Thank you, President Kukler. Dan Spain, on behalf of 108 Calendar LLC, the applicant has requested a text amendment to Section 5-105C of the zoning code to allow for short-term rentals as a special use within the C1 Central Commercial District. Short-term rentals are the type of lodging facility in which visitors rent a room for, or a full dwelling unit for a period of less than 30 days. In conjunction with the zoning code text amendment request, the applicant is seeking subsequent approval of special use permit and site plan to operate five short-term rentals units in the second floor of the existing building at 108-110 West Calendar Avenue. Provided the village board approves the zoning code text amendment to allow short-term rentals, staff has prepared the attached ordinance amending various sections of the code of ordinances to establish associated licensing and taxation requirements. Excuse me. Consistent with the regional best practices, proposed licensing provisions established, among other things, a 48-hour minimum length of stay, prohibition on the use of short-term rentals for parties or other gatherings, minimum insurance requirements, life safety requirements in excess of the building code minimums, and sanitation requirements. In response to concerns raised during the public hearing for the zoning code amendment, the licensing provisions limits the number of short-term rental licenses to no more than 10 at any time. The ordinance also includes establishes of a hotel motel tax that will be applicable to short-term rentals in the amount of 5% of the gross receipts from the rental of the lodging. Budget, the adoption of the hotel motel tax will generate revenue, however, specific budgetary projections are not available at this time. Staff recommends approval of the proposed ordinance amending the various sections of LaGrange ordinance of ordinance fees, schedules, fine schedules regarding short-term rentals and implementing hotel tax, and I move that we pass this as well.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Thompson and Trustee McGee. Um, again, I, I think it makes sense F, G, and H are related. Um, and so really to, to talk about, uh, the idea of allowing short-term rentals in LaGrange, uh, as the board knows, currently, those are not Airbnb's, VRBO's, short-term rentals are not allowed. So, any questions, comments regarding, uh, the idea of short-term rentals, this particular project, or anything else? Trustee Thompson?
Um, I, I think this is a, is, is Citizen Van Cleve and Dan Spain, the owner, reiterated, I think this is a, a really good thing for the Central Business District. When this, I was, I'm the liaison of the planning commission when this came before the planning commission. There was some conversation about, in the Central Business District, how many places this could actually apply to? I think there's only 95 residential units in the Central Dis, Business District. A lot of those are part of a senior living complex. It's above Prasanoe. Also, having the requirement where you have to have a, a parking place eliminates basically all but a few that would, except for these, because Dan Spain in the back of that building actually has his parking. So the thought that this is going to pop out and grow is just not possible with the rules we put in place. The 5% sales tax, I think, is a great way to bring in extra revenue for the village. I, myself, next week, will be flying to Atlanta, Georgia, to do this exact same thing, to onboard someone that I can onboard here in LaGrange, have breakfast, dinner, and lunch every day in the village, and have 10 people coming to town, which would be a perfect use. At the planning commission meeting, one of the planning commission members said that she said, "Can we get this built before my family comes? Because I really don't want them staying at my home." It's a great thing to have families, the restaurants, you know, BlackBerry, Blueberry, they will see breakfast crowd, people will see lunch crowds. We've now had, um, the Elm open and also now with the Wooden Paddle open, who's going to have, you know, how many ever weddings he's going to have per year. This is just a great addition to the village to keep our tax and spending dollars here, and I think it's a welcome addition to the village. I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you, Trustee Thompson. Trustee Gale?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to dovetail off of Trustee Thompson's comments and just say, you know, my, any, any concerns about, you know, opening any sort of slippery slopes or floodgates, um, you know, this is, this is limited in number. Um, and also, it, it's a special use, which means any future uses like this have to come in front of this board again. So, um, you know, it, it's, it's not, you know, the next, the next one has to come, and, and we, we serve as the, you know, the gatekeepers going forward. So I can, I can support this as, as it's presented.
Thank you, Trustee Gale, uh, Trustee Peterson.
Yes, I'd like to direct my comments. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Spain. Uh, I know he reached out to me and, uh, offered his time. He proj, he presented a well-thought-out proposal, very detailed, sought out questions from any one of us, and made himself available to answer the questions. And I agree with, uh, Trustee Thompson and Trustee Gale. It's a good addition to the village. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments? Trustee Augustine?
Uh, first of all, with respect to the concerns, uh, over whether this might affect, uh, affordable housing, uh, you know, that has been discussed. And, um, as, as we've said, and we'll talk a little bit more later in the other, um, portions of this, um, we do plan to set limits so that we don't want it capitalizing a whole bunch of second-floor apartments. So, um, we don't need 100 of these. We never see this kind of thing happening in the residential area, just in a certain defined area of our downtown businesses. Um, I'd like to say that I think the plan commission did a really great job of kicking the tires on this, leaving us with a very clear plan and raising all the right concerns, along with many reasons to support it. Second, I support this com, this concept, just in general. I've been hoping for something like this in town. I talked to any of the area entrepreneurs, encouraging them all to do something like this, whether it be this kind of short-term rental downtown or a small boutique hotel. So I'm happy to see something like this coming through because we are a regional destination. Um, and it would be useful for area residents with, as we've said, family, friends from out of town. There are businesses that would use this, as well as more and more event spaces in town, I think, would use it. So we're going to see how it goes, but our hope is that, um, this is very successful. And when we have people using these, as was said, um, they're not living there. So they're, they're every meal, every moment of spare time, they're just going to be wandering around town shopping. So, um, it's got all the things that we like to see. Um, and, and I did want to point out that we don't have anything like this right now, but we, we did not too long ago, and we, and we had historically had places of lodging. Um, most recently, some of the old-timers like me, um, might remember the Hotel Norland. It was this, um, great little place. It's where Anecdote is now, and, um, it was a little hotel, but probably less rooms than what, what this had, maybe about the same. And, uh, people came and went and got off the train and, and did their business in LaGrange, and it, it, it fell into disrepair probably in the 90s and maybe early 2000s. I can't remember. Maybe, you know, was it gone when you were here at charity? Yeah.
I remember.
Yeah. It was nothing special by the time it decided to close down, but, um, that was during kind of a decline in downtown LaGrange, but there's a resurgence, there's a vibrancy, and we're really working to have a nice mix. So a lot of, everyone that I've, almost, I should say, everyone that I've talked to is in support of this and can't wait to use it. I've heard just two concerns specifically, and one was addressed tonight, and another was another resident who thinks that this could kind of open up a can of worms. But we're going to be careful, and we're going to protect it, and we're going to limit it, and we're going to see how this one goes. And as Trustee Gale says, it's a, a special use, so, um, it's, it doesn't really fully change the code. So I'm, I'm in full support of this, and I hope, hope we see it through.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Um, Deputy Village Manager Jones, I had a couple of questions. Uh, first, on the parking, if you could just clarify that parking will be behind the Elm, correct?
Well, there, there is some parking that's available at the 108-110 Calendar Building, and then as part of the special use permit, uh, the applicant is required to enter into a license agreement between the two property owners that there will also be parking provided on the Elm property. So the requirement in the zoning code in adding the special use for short-term rentals is that there's one park, off-street parking space provided. is that there's one park, off-street parking space provided per short-term rental unit.
Dan, can you tell us how that parking's going to work?
So there's, there's currently four spaces. They are tandem behind 108-110, so count that as two spaces. I'm not going to count that as four. There's eight spaces currently that are behind the Elm. That's a luxury. Most of my managers and employees, all of my employees, park in either the parking garage or in the other places in the downtown that's allowable by code. So if there are five people, five parking spaces, two would be at 108-110, and then pretty much right next door but behind would be three spaces allotted for those individuals. So, you know, I'm happy to work with the village on whatever type of agreement, if there needs to be an agreement. I've already sent, since I'm the owner on both, I've already done a lease between the two entities, and happy to discuss further on.
Have you decided if there, if you're going to charge for parking?
Uh, no, I have not.
Can, if, if there's a charge for parking with hotels, is that something that we can tax also, or not?
I'd have to refer that to the village attorney.
Okay. I guess we can, I don't know if you want to speak off the top of your head, or we can just wait to see what happens in the future?
Yeah, I would have to look at Illinois Municipal Code and the rules for charging for parking in terms of the, our authority to tax it, but that was not something that at least, up to this point, we had been discussing.
Okay, and then that follows into my next question, which was, this tax at 5%? How did we come to that figure?
So, it, so it is based on the authority that is in the Illinois Municipal Code. And so, just to be clear, it is a tax, it's, it's not actually a tax on the operator of the short-term rental, rather, it's a, on the guest, and then it's collected and remitted back to the village, and our authority is, you know, up to 5%.
Okay, so, so the maximum tax for an occupancy tax is 5%?
Uh, because we're not home rule, yes.
Okay. And that's being relayed from the operator in full to the village?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay. And I think those are great things. I, I actually got more emails, maybe than, than the trustees, and my emails, we're about 50/50 in favor of it and against it. And I think the people that were against it are concerned with VRBOs generally, and, wondering, you know, if that will change the character. I'm pretty comfortable that it won't. It's a pretty isolated development, it's five units. I'm not sure that it'll have really much impact on the character positively or negatively. I do trust that it will be done well, as the building was done in the Elm, and so I think that's great. I join with some of the concerns on the affordable housing. In this, this specific project, that there wasn't housing there helps me come to the conclusion that this should be allowed. If there were people living upstairs that were going to be evicted for this, that would be hard for me to, to do. So again, when you're looking at this specific property, the fact that the units were vacant weren't being used, and hadn't been for several years, being used as housing lends it to being an appropriate development. So with that, I thank you for, for your continued investment in LaGrange. I thank you for working with staff. I know you did on, on making sure in the code, and making sure fire suppression and the parking issues were addressed, so I appreciate all of that. And with that, I would ask for a roll call vote. Oh, yes, we're only doing a roll call vote for F, and then Trustee Thompson will officially introduce G and H, and I'm not sure how much conversation that will be about them, but we'll see.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Moving right on to item G, an ordinance amending sections of the LaGrange zoning code relating to short-term rentals. I'll go back to Trustee Thompson.
Thank you, President Kukler. Dan Spain, on behalf of 108 Calendar LLC, the applicant is the owner of the property at 108-110 West Calendar Avenue. The applicant is requesting a text amendment to Section 5-105(c) of the zoning code to allow for short-term rentals as a special use within the C1 Central Commercial District. Short-term rentals of this type of lodging facility in which visitors rent a room or a full dwelling of the unit for a period of less than 30 days. In conjunction with the zoning code text amendment request, applicant is seeking subsequent approval of a special use permit and a site plan to operate five short-term rentals on the second floor of the existing building at 108-110 West Calendar Avenue. The attached ordinance amends various sections of the LaGrange code. It creates a definition of the short-term rentals, adds short-term rentals as a special use in the C1 district, and creates the zoning standards for any special use permit for short-term rentals. These standards include the prohibition of, prohibition on renting only a portion of the dwelling unit, a minimum parking requirement of one parking space per short-term rental unit, and limitation on signage. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed text amendment and the special use permit on April 8th, 2025. The applicant presented his perspective on the local market demand for lodging accommodations and how lodging could support surrounding downtown businesses. Three members of the public spoke at the hearing, expressed concerns regarding the impact of short-term rentals on housing affordability, potential demands for village services, and related revenues to support those demands and parking. The Plan Commission expressed divergent opinions. Some commissioners agree with applicants' position that there is community need for the lodging, and that with appropriate licensing and zoning requirements, the use could be properly managed to avoid any potential negative impacts on housing or community character. Other commissioners expressed concerns regarding the uses consistently with the community character, even if limitations were implemented through the licensing and zoning requirements. After deliberation, the Plan Commission voted 3 to 2 to recommend approval of the proposed text amendment with conditions. Because the motion failed to receive a positive vote of four or more commissioners per zoning code Section 13-103d, the Plan Commission vote is effectively a recommendation for denial. Consistent with the conditions recommended in the April 8th Plan, Planning Commission memo, staff has also prepared an ordinance providing under separate cover, amending the code of ordinance to establish licensing and taxation requirements for short-term rental operations. Staff recommends approval of proposed text amendment to the LaGrange zoning code, subject to the subsequent actions of the proposed licensing and taxation requirements. I move to pass this as well.
A second.
Any discussion on H? Excuse me, any discussion on H?
G.
I'm sorry, G. Thank you. All right, give a roll call vote on G.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Moving on to H, an ordinance approving a special use permit and site plan to authorize short-term rentals at 108-110 West Calendar Avenue, again referred to Trustee Thompson.
Thank you, President Kukler. Dan Spain, on behalf of 108 Calendar LLC, the applicant is the owner of the property at 108-110 West Calendar Avenue. The applicant is requesting a special use permit and site plan to operate five short-term rentals on the second floor of the existing building at 108-110 West Calendar Avenue. Because short-term rentals are currently prohibited in the zoning code, applicant is also requesting a text amendment to the zoning code to allow short-term rentals as a special use in the C1 district, which is addressed. The text amendment application is presented under separate cover. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed text amendment and special use permit on the April 8th, 2025. The applicant presented his perspective on the local market demand for lodging and accommodations, and how lodging could support surrounding downtown businesses. Three members of the public spoke at the hearing, expressing concerns regarding the impact of short-term rentals on housing affordability, potential demands for village services, and related revenues to support those demands and parking. Pending approval of text amendments, the Planning Commission generally agreed that the proposed short-term rentals at 108-110 West Calendar met the criteria for the approval of special use permit, with the conditions noted in the staff report, including the need to capture the proposed shared parking in a recorded document. After deliberation, the Plan Commission voted 3 to 2 to recommend approval of the proposed special use permit and site plan conditions. Because the motion failed to receive the positive vote of four or more commissioners per zoning code Section 13-103d, the Plan Commission vote is effectively a recommendation for denial. Staff recommends approval of the proposed ordinance approving this special use permit and site plan to authorize short-term rentals at 108-110 West Calendar Avenue, and I move to pass as well.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Thompson and Trustee O'Brien. Any discussion regarding H? Trustee Augustine?
Thank you, President Kukler. I, I'm not sure where I read it, so which letter it would actually be a part of. Two things, I thought I read somewhere, and maybe that's a decision to be made, a little further down the row, but in limiting the amount of these that we would allow in the village, and in the certain area that we've drawn out for it, thought I saw somewhere that it was 10.
That, that's correct. That was in the first ordinance that you voted on, which was the licensing framework, which would limit the number of licenses to 10, and that would be one per property, one per building? That's the way the licensing framework is structured, so 10 properties max that could have short-term rentals in the C1 district.
Oops, I didn't want 10. I wanted to discuss that, so I missed that part, but I guess I voted for it. That doesn't mean we're going to have 10, though. I just think that's a pretty high number.
It would be a maximum of 10.
I get it, so we don't have to give 10. Okay, and second question is on signage, one square foot, seems like a penalty. Why one square foot for a signage? I mean, people are going to have the address, they're going to find it, but why would we not allow them to have a little bit more? And I get it, second floor, but...
That's really what it's consistent with. It's our second floor, second floor regulations for second-floor tenants, also for our onsite informational signage is generally limited to one square foot. It's, it's not intended to be something that's visible to a driver, it's more to the pedestrian that walks up and is making sure that that's the building that, you know, Google Maps directed them to.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I just think one square foot's pretty small. I've, I've looked at a few of the buildings, including one right next to that, they've got a lot more than that, so we're making exceptions. I, I'm not, I don't know that the applicant is asking for more, but I just thought that that seemed a little bit...
So that was in the last one that you just voted on, the text amendments?
Yeah.
But it is something we can revisit when we evaluate the entirety of our sign code
Yep, yep.
In the zoning code rewrite coming up.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments on H? Seeing none, a roll call vote?
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Congratulations, and we do appreciate your continued investment in LaGrange. Moving on, we are now at the point in the meeting where we're open for public comments regarding matters not on tonight's agenda.
I just want a clarification from what you just said. Does that mean that the license is, goes to the property, not to the units? So this license for five units is one license? So there could be potentially 50 units? I mean, potentially?
Yeah, yeah, just, again, you could throw out any number, right? But it is true that each license goes per building.
Per building, okay. Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Seeing no other public comments, I'll, I'll move on to trustee comments, and we will be going into closed session shortly after trustee comments. So any trustee comments tonight? Trustee Augustine?
Thank you, President Kukler. I just have one. I wanted to use a little, a moment to promote an upcoming event that the Historical Society is putting on. It's about a man named Robert E. Coulter Jr., and if the name sounds familiar, that's because that is the name on our American Legion Hall on LaGrange Road. He was a true war hero from World War II, and this event at the Historical Society is on May 22nd at 7:00 p.m. Come to that beautiful building and hear about this great man, and all of the proceeds will be going to the American Legion. So this is a really great event about a really great man, and, you know, you drive by this place and you see the name and you don't know anything about it, a lot of people don't. So I'm, I'm hoping that we'll have a big crowd. There's definitely a few seats left, so we hope we, we can fill that out, and if anyone has questions afterwards, they can ask me. But they can go to the LaGrange Historical Society website to buy their tickets.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. I know there's a lot of family members of the Coulter family that are still in town in LaGrange, so hopefully they'll all make it out. Anybody else with comments? Okay. At this time, the village board intends to meet in closed session under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and Section 2C1 to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, Section 2C11 for the purpose of discussing pending or probable litigation, and Section 2C21 to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Illinois Open Meetings Act. The village board will not reconvene to open session as no formal action will occur following the closed session. May I have a motion and a second to enter into closed session?
I move we enter into closed session?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale and Trustee O'Brien. With that, I'd ask Clerk Saladino to call the roll.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Thank you, and do we go, do we do any other motions before we go downstairs? We don't end this meeting first?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. The second Monday in June.